I'm going to flex my heart.
Four.
Good to see you. Under radio, just number one, son. Tell number two and number three. Beautiful. God damn it, it sounded like. You're just a favorite son. We've got in order of. My campaign says that.
House in the. Credit. Okay. We have experience when you get one of those where they're just.
Change of message, he said, he's on, he'll be online.
And I don't. Okay.
Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is April second, twenty twenty four. We're beginning the meeting at four thirty P M. In the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have part of the council here. At the table, we have Councilman Northfelt, Councilman Weston, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Christensen and myself. Councilman It's Yamanu should be joining us on Zoom shortly. And Councilman Hune should be joining us shortly. Also, at the table, we have our interim Assistant City Manager, Mr. Flores, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We have our meeting minutes from March twenty six, twenty twenty four. Turn it to the council for discussion or a motion on the minutes.
Motion to approve the March twenty six study meeting.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those minutes stand adjourned, I mean adjourned. Well, that was fast. Um, we're now going to review our regular council meeting tonight, agenda and our housing authority. Turn the time to Mr. Flores. Are there any changes with the regular?
Um, we will have Jamie come up to give an update on the golf course fees and addressing some questions that came up last week.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jamie Young, Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, so, uh, we dug through some of this and and here's some of the information that we found. Uh, so you would ask how many rounds of golf we have in the in the senior and military discount ranges? And at each of the golf courses, we have a little over four thousand rounds a year. So if we charged those people the regular golf rate, uh, it would be about an additional twenty six thousand dollars a year per golf course. Um, if we did the ten percent discount, which is a little bit standard, um, the fitness center does a ten percent discount. It would be about seventeen thousand dollars a year annually. Um, really, our preference uh is that we make those rates the same. So the military rate would go up three dollars a person and the senior rate would go up two dollars a person, which would give them a twenty two percent discount. Uh, and that's a difference of about nine thousand dollars a year. We also would like, um, with council approval to make that rate be Monday through Thursday only, which is standard with with senior rates, that that's not a weekend and an evening rate or a weekend and holiday rate, but just Monday through Thursday. Um, then if if that's uh the agreed upon rate, then when we raise the rates again, we could raise that one a little bit more than the standard rate to get that discount a little bit less where you're a little bit more comfortable if that would be the desire of the council. Do you have questions on that or or preferences or or?
So the two dollars extra is from last week, we increased.
Increased it by two dollars. Yeah, so it would go from um twelve to fourteen for the seniors and military would go from eleven to fourteen.
I I think I'm okay with that. I I just pulled up some senior rates for a couple of other golf courses, Salt Lake City, Rose Park and Meadowbrook, which is in Kennersville. And senior rate for those are fourteen and fifteen dollars.
Yep.
Um, I think our golf courses are better.
Indeed.
We do too.
We do too. Yes.
So I mean, I think, uh, still a really good deal for for the golfers out there, but I feel a lot better that we're at least close to our neighbors, so.
Yep, and that would put us at fourteen dollars for each of those. Each of those groups.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions on that item? Okay, thank you. Okay, just trying to access this. Okay. So Councilman Fitz Yamanu has joined us online and Councilman Hune has joined us at the table. Um, I had one more question about tonight's agenda. Mr. Pastrick, come to the mic real quick. Sorry, I didn't give you a heads up. Okay, thanks.
He's always ready.
Yeah.
Try to be.
All right, I'm trying to figure out. I think it's item C in the public hearings. So the trigger that improvements of fifty thousand moving up to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
So if they improve at all over the original, if we have a delay agreement for their curb and gutter, sidewalk curb and gutter, could we have that completed at that time, no matter what the increase is?
Right, so so when we have a delay agreement in place, that means they already triggered the improvements at some point in the past. So we can call, my understanding, a delay agreement whenever we want. So so yeah, whether they're spending money or not, we can call the delay agreement.
Okay, so do we have to pass a different resolution to make that policy? Or?
We already do that.
You do it?
Right, as far as being able to call a delay agreement.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
All right, any other questions on the regular agenda? And any questions on that housing authority agenda? Hey, seeing none, we'll move on to our resolutions and we'll begin with Resolution twenty four dash fifty six and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Christiansen. Half the world says Christianson and the other half says Christensen.
Christianson, which you can call me.
Oh, see, anytime I see Christianson, they're like, oh, we just think.
I'm Brandon, Council Mayor. I'm Brandon Christensen, Deputy Chief of the Police Department. I'm here to bring to you guys a motive, a memorandum of understanding between the Salt Lake County Children's Justice Center and the Police Department. It's a renewal from two thousand nineteen and we had one before then as well. It's, uh, many of you are familiar with the Children's Justice Center, providing best practices and services to the children of victims of sexual assault and child abuse. Not much has changed from the last one, pretty straightforward, and I believe every police department in the Salt Lake Valley has signed it or is going to.
Sounds like a good agreement. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to Resolution twenty four dash fifty four. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Johnson for our garbage can purchase.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Ben Johnson, Public Works Director. I'm here to recommend the council authorized us to purchase more garbage cans, as you're aware. And recall, we we budget a certain amount of money every year to purchase uh new cans that either replace cans that are uh retired due to their condition or uh to supply cans to new customers. And so, um, we don't buy them all at once because we can't store them all in one. And so we buy them a truckload at a time, which happens to put us over the limit for the council, for the our city manager's manager's authorization to spend. Um, so we are requesting that you authorize us to purchase these six hundred and twenty four garbage cans for price of forty one thousand eight hundred and thirty nine dollars.
So do you buy extra lids? So that if a lid breaks, you just replace the lid instead of the whole can?
Yep.
So we do have those in it.
We have we have a stock of parts that we can repair them instead of replacing the entire can.
Awesome. Hey, any questions from the council?
The money is just coming from sanitation fees.
Correct, and it's something that we already had budgeted. Um, like I said, we just can't get them all at once, can't store them all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have our consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on our consent agenda? They're all pretty easy. Real estate accepting of temporary construction easements and warranty deeds. Okay, seeing no questions there, we'll go to our communications items and we'll go with a footsall court and we'll turn the time to Ms. Young for that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jamie Young, Parks and Recreation Director. So we, uh, a few months ago were approached by an uh nonprofit organization called the Rise Athletic Foundation and their mission is to promote soccer, uh mostly in underserved communities and really with a little bit of urgency because the United States will be hosting the World Cup in a few years and so they really want people to have plenty of opportunity to play golf and be engaged or not golf, uh as I as I'm thinking about our golf, uh soccer. So footsall is a a street hard surface soccer court field, I guess you can call it either. And it's a, um, they they recommended that we, uh, or asked if we had some space that we could convert some some hard surface courts into footsall courts. So in working with them, we, um, determined that the best place to do that would be at Centennial Park. Um, it is our sports complex and we have a lot of hard surface courts there. There, we have eight basketball courts. Um, we didn't want to convert tennis courts there because, as you remember, we took four tennis courts years ago and and converted them into pickleball, so we didn't want to take any more tennis courts away. So we have eight basketball courts and um and thought it would be uh prudent to use two of the eight basketball courts and convert them into uh footsall courts. Uh, there is absolutely no obligation financially for the city. They cover a hundred percent of the cost, which is between fifty and sixty thousand dollars for the fencing and they do some uh surface repair as well. They will put logos on the courts, uh whatever logos we want, certainly it would be city logos. Uh, and then they are ours. We can do what we want with them. If at some point we chose to take them out, we could. We absolutely have no obligation to them for use and legal determine that there's no need for you to approve an agreement because there's no financial obligation on the city's part. We just wanted to be sure that you knew that that was going to happen. Um, the president, I believe, of the Rise Athletic Foundation is Nick Raimondo, who was the goalkeeper for Rail Salt Lake for many, many years. And they want to have, when they do a grand opening of the footsall courts, have the R S L players come um and be a part of that and just help promote soccer in the city. So we we would like to have your blessing to move forward with that and I think they're ready. Um, I think they're ready anytime we're we give them the thumbs up to get started on that and it's only a few weeks to get that completed. It really is some some fencing is about all the construction that needs to happen there.
So any questions from the council?
My principal flags are going off.
Okay.
Define the hard surface for me.
It's the same as a tennis court or a basketball court. They're concrete surfaces.
So it would be a concrete surface, wouldn't be a sports court or anything like that.
No, the same as what's there now. They'll just they'll just do some um repairs to the some of the cracks there, which will make them a little bit better playable, but they they play them on the street. Um, so there's not a lot that that they'll, there will be a lot that we'll have to do in the future, anything more than what we do on the basketball courts.
Okay, I guess one of the questions I have is having watched soccer, there are some times when you're not always vertical.
Yep.
And what there, you know, what is the risk management aspect of playing soccer on a hard surface?
Well, I don't I don't know that there would be a lot of slide tackles in footsall, um but probably not any different than basketball. You know, people dive on the court for basketballs too and you know, on a on a concrete surface, you're going to have road rash a lot more than you would on a grass field. And the great thing with these courts is you can go with a group of three or four people and play footsall where you can't really do that on a soccer field. You know, soccer field is just really large to to try to have a small group um activity. So I think it'll be a really great addition to Centennial Park and a really great location for that. The My Hometown group over the many years have asked for footsall courts in some of their neighborhood areas, but most of the parks in their neighborhood areas only have one tennis court, so it would be completely eliminating tennis and basketball um at those parks. But at Centennial Park, we can accommodate because we have a lot more courts to choose from.
We're going to be pulling the basketball standards off of those two courts.
Yes, and we we chose the two courts on the west side of the pool on the south end because we wanted to kind of stay away from the area where the pickleball courts, because those get a lot of traffic and a lot of use and parking. So we chose to do them on the other side. So the southwest corner, the southwest uh two courts will be the kind of back by where we put the R C crawler course. And they won't be locked. They'll be open all the time, but they're they're kind of fenced, but there are gaps for people to use all the time. We won't, we won't keep them locked up. They'll be available all the time to play like the other courts are.
Need to do a league for this, for footsall?
We certainly could do some leagues with only two courts. It might might be a little bit challenging. We, you know, we'll do our best to keep open play as much as we can, but we'll probably do some event type things that we would have some some tournaments or special event. Use of those courts as well. Certainly with the grand opening, we'll do that and have some skills and drills and different things out there.
Yeah, I think this would be a great addition to the city. Footsall is actually super popular and um for families that kids like my nephews and uh mothers, you know, they go all the way out to Draper or even down to Lehigh where they have specific facilities for footsall. Um, that'd be great to try that out here. I think there already is uh a demand for it, so I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, we'll go to our Opportunity Scholars presentation. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Webster.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, or Aloha, as I'd like to say right now. Um, for all you who don't know me, I'm Nate Webster. I'm with the Economic Development Group, uh focusing on retention of our businesses and I also head up the Opportunity Scholars part that we have in our in our community and in in West Valley City. Most know me as Nate Webster from West Valley and I do not wear khakis and a red shirt and go around. But that's how everybody knows me, it seems like these days, thanks to my introduction. Here to present the Opportunity Scholars is I recently embarked on a new opportunity with the Opportunity Scholars to represent economic development in the state of Utah and specifically West Valley City. But before I get into that, I want to go a little bit about the program, as many of you may not know about it. At West Valley City, we started a partnership with Opportunity Scholars in the University of Utah back in two thousand seventeen. Since then, we make an annual contribution of roughly or approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in scholarships, which additionally brings business partnerships, internships and job placement for our students that attend this program at the University of Utah. Some of the criteria that is required is they have to be a West Valley City resident. They have to have graduated high school. There's a first generation student and there has to be a financial need, which is usually related to F A S F A. Students earn a bachelor's degree from the School of Business at the University of Utah. The culture of this program is mana, a mana spirit or Ohana family. The program's built around aloha leadership, which if you don't know what aloha leadership that is, that is all inclusive and welcoming. And in addition to that, there's professional and student mentorship associated with this program in our community and at the University of Utah with fellow students. Since two thousand seventeen to current, we've had a hundred and seven, a hundred and eleven West Valley students in this program. We have had approximately sixty five students intern in our community, which is awesome, in my opinion. Um, some of these are paid and some of them are unpaid, but they are all related to their degrees. In two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty four scholarships, we uh sponsored forty four West Valley students. However, we have sixty plus students in the program from West Valley City, which means we don't have enough funding to fund all of the students that we donate to, so we have other community business partners and leaders that have made the contributions to make this possible for our students. Just this spring, we have sixteen students graduating from this program, which is awesome. And this is one of my favorite stats that I love to chat and brag about with our business partners. The University of Utah graduates roughly thirty five percent of all those who go and get an undergraduate degree. In the Opportunity Scholarship program, we graduate two and a half times that number, which means we graduate over eight percent of our students that attended this program, which is a large lift and it's thank you to some of these that are in attendance. And if I may just point them out, we've got Erica Rojas, she's the director of the program and we got Lautu Kanikini, the Associate Director from the program, and we welcome them today. Little bit more about this, this this embarkation that we had. It was an economic envelopment tourism in the state of Hawaii. With the University of Utah, the David Echols School of Business, we had five of our students attend this opportunity in Hawaii. Some of the objectives of this program and why we went to Hawaii was to understand the government, social, science, foundations of tourism and economic development. Number two, compare and contrast the cultural, political and social aspects of economic development and tourism in Utah and Hawaii. Explore, number three, explore the ethical implications of economic pursuits and development and tourism industries. Number four, foster critical thinking, analytical skills through real world applications, site visits, guest speakers, economic development influencers. The group was privileged to gain insights from representatives from various different prominent organizations. Speakers included voices from Hawaiian Airlines, offering perspectives on the dynamics of aviation and its impact on regional economic growth. They're also a leader in a lot of their that aviation that's taking place right now, as you've probably heard of their new uh merger with Alaska Airlines. So they'll be very international. Brigham Young University of uh of Hawaii was also contributed to valuable insights in the intersection of education and economic development, shedding light on the role of academia in fostering innovation and workplace development. The Polynesian Cultural Center provided a unique cultural perspective, emphasizing the importance of preserving indigenous heritage while also driving economic vitality through tourism and cultural exchange. This was one of, probably one of the most interesting that we learned about today. They have key performance indicators that create value and satisfaction and the goal is fifty percent. And let me tell you, fifty percent is Disneyland. That is kind of the standard of the happiest place on earth. Number one was Costco. Number two was the Polynesian Cultural Center that said that based on the value that they spent, it was worth it. So Costco, we're doing really well because we have one of those in West Valley. Um, additionally, Embassy Suites or and Western States Group, who is part of our Embassy Suites here in West Valley, shared their experiences on hospitality and real estate development, highlighting the critical role of infrastructure and accommodations in attracting business and tourism. I then had the opportunity to wrap up the trip by sharing the importance of creating an environment conducive to business growth where businesses can thrive and contribute to the overall prosperity of our community. My insights served as a call to action for fostering a vibrant economic ecosystem that fosters innovation, entrepreneurship and sustainability in the economic process. This trip was more than just an educational excursion. It was a testament to our commitment to nurturing the leaders of tomorrow by providing them with a firsthand experiences of how businesses and communities can come together to create meaningful change. By learning the diverse cultures and industries, our scholars are poised to bring back insights that will benefit our community in numerous ways. I look forward to coming back to you all, Mayor and Council, to present the renewal of our partnership with the University of Utah, Hometown Opportunity Scholars and the Echo School of Business. This program is one that has not had, only had an impact on our specific students who receive the scholarship, but will be a multi-generational, multi-generational influence where stars are changed for generations to come. Hear any questions?
Questions from the council? Great job.
Thank you.
Great. Program, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I have a question, sorry. I know in the past, we had a component of um the Hometown Scholars Program that provided for um assistance with housing, um either here in the city or on campus. Do we still have that component to this?
Yes, that component's built into that approximately a hundred and eighty thousand. We house students at the Fairborn Station Apartments and also have a partnership with the Ivory Foundation to make that possible as well.
Cool. No, I just remember students had talked about that was such a um crucial part of their success and being able to be out of the house, but still in the community. And so I just want, yeah.
Yes, that's still a major component and will continue to exist. Um, it's kind of the sought after housing, let's put it that way, if I can, and speak on the students' behalf with the amenities that they receive, the proximity to tracks and the accessibility to get on and off campus relatively quick.
Excellent, thank you.
And then the funding from this is from the R D A, correct?
Part of that, yes, it's through the, it's through the R D A. Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll now go to our Utopia Financial Update and we'll turn the time to Mr. Welch.
Jim Welch, the Finance Director, and I've been asked to just give a quick kind of brief snapshot on where we are with Utopia. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and if I don't have the answers, I'll certainly get them for you. Um, this chart that I have uh shows the debt service obligation of West Valley City compared to the uh U I A dividend that we're starting to receive from Utopia. Uh, U I A is the interlocal agency that uh the current model is working under where they'll go out and they'll build out fiber in certain communities, bring the revenue back in and then the revenue's starting to come back and pay back some of that debt. So currently, uh, they, the debt service actually started in about two thousand and eight and then it goes up about a hundred thousand dollars per year. This will continue on through twenty forty, at which time, uh, the debt will be retired and then any of those payments that U I A is currently paying will continue on until they have paid back West Valley City, the amount of portion, the amount of money which we have paid into it for this debt. As one of the founding fa- uh founding cities, um, that's, that's one of the benefits we'll get from that. So the way's out there, we're taking a long view on this one, but that's currently the uh, current the program. Uh, Eric, we can look at the next slide. The second page is the actual amount of the pledge. It shows you that it goes up a little bit each year. We're currently in fiscal year twenty twenty four and then uh we'll go up through twenty twenty four, twenty forty.
So what was the total pledge? I did not have the chance to total all that up.
Uh, that's.
Will be out of pocket by twenty forty?
That's the, you mean, the total amount that West Valley will have paid, including principal and interest, everything like there? That, um, let's see, I think it was, I don't have that number right here, but I believe it's about a hundred and fifty four million by the time we're done and the total amount for the uh for the U Utopia pledge was five hundred and nineteen million. That's for Utopia. There's some additional debt. That's also for U I A. However, those, the Utopia debt's the one that we're paying on right now.
And then the Utopia debt will be reimbursed, the principal and interest or only the principal?
Yes, principal and interest.
So at the trajectory we're going now, how many years will that take?
Well, we've only got about three years of trajectory on this one. And so, uh, they surprise us and like we had a, if you can go back to the previous slide, Eric. Um, the big jump that we have from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three was a welcome surprise. The one from twenty three to twenty four is a projection. Uh, when I've spoken with Utopia, they expect very conservatively to increase that by about two percent per year. Uh, personally, I believe that will continue to grow significantly over time. Uh, like I say, this is a long term event and it'll take a while to get paid back, but I do believe that they will. Before the formation of U I A, uh, we had virtually no prospect of uh getting that paid back and their new model seems to be very successful. They're getting more. And their new model seems to be very successful. They're getting more, much higher take rate and their profitability seems to be such that that will continue to grow and hopefully we'll see that the receipts grow each year.
Okay. Any questions on this presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions for this.
Sure.
So the revenue we have is, uh, about one point five.
Uh huh, that's correct.
Almost one point five mil. Uh, but the, the debt service is about four million dollars?
That's correct. Yeah, the debt service this next year, we expect that to be four point four million dollars. And it's about one point four and some change for revenue.
Where would get that money to cover that hole?
Uh, same way we've been doing every year, it comes out of the general fund. Correct.
When do we can get payment? We don't know.
Well, of course not, because the slides here, we're hoping that it continues to grow. I can guarantee you that we'll be above water by the time we hit twenty forty. But yeah, I don't know exactly what's going to happen. It all depends on take rates, all depends on profitability. Uh, if you've been watching the press releases or if you're familiar with the branching out that Utopia is doing, they've started to branch out to a number of different communities within the state. I understand they have over twenty connect, different communities right now that they're serving. The original founding communities, which of which we were, uh, one is eleven. So they picked up at least nine, and I know there's a couple of the there in the works. They're also working with entities out of state. So they're, they're branching out quite a bit, and I believe the profitability will eventually continue to hopefully outpace the growth of the payments until it actually pays off.
If we bail out, what do we?
If we bail out, we continue to make the payment without revenue. So we're committed for the term of this. Yeah, you'll remember, it's, they've got great information on their website. And I think that's a really good thing to go back and review some of their Q and A. Uh, they talk about particularly how Utopia is and was hatched as a municipal telecom service, which just like roads, just like streets, anybody can use. I think right now they've got at least eleven different service providers that can come on and use it, pay them for the opportunity to use their fiber. The experience that I've seen is that the rates for, uh, internet services in particular have gone down. That other entities, the Comcast of the world, the Century Links are now installing fiber in communities where in the past they were not. So from competitive point of view, it's had great impact. Uh, from a monetary view, there is a sacrifice for it, but just like we pay for streets and we pay for other infrastructure, that's the middle name of the ut- of Utopia. So.
One thing I'm concerned about, Jim, I think concerned about is, uh, in these days, is a lot of companies out there, a lot of competition. To like the long run, uh, we cannot compete with them. You know what I'm saying? That we behind. And if we're behind, the customers, they won't use our product. Yeah, they have to use our product. You can see that right now. Phone like cell phone, they upgrade almost every, every year. You see, Google, Facebook, everything they try to basically pop up their products.
There's, there's certainly a lot of competition out there and it, and technology continues to change. Um, however, their, their model seems to be working very well and a lot of communities are interested in, in expanding and using uh, the Utopia model. Uh, they're constantly in, they're constantly looking for ways that they can do that. So, yeah, I mean, there's risks in everything and I agree with you that technology is one of those risks.
Tech is, it's, it's, I mean, that type of businesses. It's tough. Um, if we don't do that, we're gonna be out of business. And it's look like we are bleeding a lot of monies every year. Yeah, I, I don't know.
So your forecast is that we pay in full by twenty forty?
Oh, no, no. Oh, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
No. Twenty forty is when the debt service actually pays off. So the bonds are paid for that we're, that we're, uh, committed to pay. And then anything, whatever they're paying us at that time will continue to come back until the total amount that we paid will be paid back to the city. That's the plan.
Then where will the profits go for Utopia?
Uh, they continue to have whatever their profits are for growth. Uh, it won't cause any additional burden to them because it'll all be, already be spending that money with us. It will actually just benefit the city. So I don't know what their, their picture's going to look like in twenty forty. But I know that ours, if they continue on this trajectory, is going to be, uh, almost a, it'll look like a windfall for us. Provided everything continues the way it's going.
It's a, but, but a time, maybe twenty forty, we outdated, you know, say, a company is already surpasses.
I don't think it's. I can't project what fiber is, but I understand it's, uh.
Thinking about twenty forty or twenty fifty, we're gonna make money. That we thinking in our head. But twenty forty or twenty fifty, other companies that they can compete, not only Utopia, but compete with other companies and they try to get more money than they can, and we have a, have our business. Because we don't have money to upgrade our system.
It seems like Utopia is, is growing though. The model is, is, uh, is improving. I can speak from my own experience that, uh, I've had two other internet providers. And I've never been happier than I am with Utopia right now. And the other ones, they would raise the price every six months or every year, and Utopia keeps the same for me and and, and I would always get lagging service and now I'm getting great service. I don't, I don't know how long it's gonna last, um, but, but, uh, I hope that they will improve as, as, uh, time goes on.
It helps you too.
But we're locked in either way. I mean, it's Yeah, it's. It doesn't make any sense to, to back out of, of something so that we don't get the money for it. We've already committed to it and we've already been paying. We might as well get the, the benefit, right?
We, either way, we, we're gonna stick with it.
Yeah.
So whether we get a benefit in twenty forty or not, we're still tied in.
Yep.
Uh, I, I didn't say about, we try to bail out, but the thing is, it's bad. The contract is a nightmare to me, to be honest with you. Uh, I have no idea why we get into this, but now we have to basically rest, stop for this. Um, thinking about we're gonna make money in the future, I, I really don't think, I don't very much, no, I'm very optimistic, but in this case, I think it's, uh, it's very tough for me to put it that position to thinking about gonna make money in the future about this, to be honest with you. No, I don't think so. Too bad.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Welch.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll turn the time over to Mr. Flores for our budget update.
Thank you. Um, be fairly quick. I think they're blowing it up. Essentially, what we, what we did is we took, uh, you as a council's recommendations from the strategic plan meeting and worked through the process to, uh, get those included in the budget. And, uh, we're, we're happy with, with where we're at. Shouldn't be able to pull this up soon, but we do have, uh, we've got one-time costs that were discussed. Um, and, and those have been included. Since that time, we've met with each, uh, department head to uh, kind of run through this list with them and let them know what your direction was and then what was approved. Um, and we, we feel good, department heads feel good about where we're at. Um, there, there it is for you. So on the left, we have the one-time expenses for approval. Uh, those are coming out of the CIP fund. We, we feel good. There's, there's definitely a need for those. Uh, we've got the money available to do it, so that's what will be approved as one-time expenses. On the right, we have our ongoing expenses, um, which again, we've, uh, we discussed with you, uh, we are right now, so that comes out to the five point six million, give or take. And we are right about balanced with the budget at this point. So I think when we discussed this last and strategic plan, uh, we were not quite as close as we are now. Uh, but we worked through some things and took a deep dive line by line. Uh, Chief Evans and, and Jim Welch were, were great and we've gotten to a point that over the next couple of weeks, we will, we feel pretty good that we'll bring you a balanced budget. Thank you. Uh, so, yeah, we were telling you at that point, we were about three million short. We were now about three hundred thousand short. So we'll, we'll wrap that up and, and get things looking good. Just so you're aware, let's see, so I get my dates correct. Uh, we will, that should come to you April twenty-third, Jim. Correct. April twenty-third, we'll be bringing that counsel. Yeah. Uh, so everything should be good and finalized for the April twenty-third meeting. And at that time, if you've got further questions, we can dive into it. Uh, I have another item on here to, to point out is that, uh, the homeless shelter will be open for an additional twelve months than we were initially told. So in the current year, which you were notified, we will likely be bringing a budget opening to cover the difference in costs that the state isn't funding. And just giving you a heads up for next year, we will likely need to do the same thing. Uh, as of now, we believe we will get the same level of funding from the state that we're getting uh, this year, which isn't quite covering our costs. So just a heads up on that for, for next year's budget. Any questions?
When we go for budget in April, I guess we're in April now.
Yeah, in a few weeks.
Um, can you kind of give us a summary of the massages that you did to the budget that got us? Because we were like five million over.
Yep.
And we went.
We can certainly do that. Uh, I'll, I'll tell you now. Probably the biggest impact we had was, um, sales tax revenue. And I think when, I can't remember when we met, I think we met in February. At that point, we, we didn't have the, sorry, we, we had numbers through November, I think. Um, and now just over the last few months, we, sales tax revenue numbers have been great and we've been able to increase that on the revenue side. That probably had the biggest impact and then there was a lot of other small tweaks as well, but, uh, we can.
Sales tax revenue doesn't continue on that pace, then we, we have issues.
Um, yeah, and we would any, any year, but yeah, it's hard to predict that far out what sales tax revenue will be, but, uh, Jim and his, his people do a great job of kind of tracking the trends there as well as considering all the other economic impacts currently. And we do our best to predict the future and place that number at a level that isn't overly risky, but, uh, gives us a number we feel comfortable with to put a budget together. But yes, we can, we can bring you what those adjustments were, for sure.
The, um, I guess cost of living or merit still aligned with what we were talking about on strategic?
Yep, they are. Uh, we haven't quite finalized that. What we're looking at is between three and three and a half percent market increase. I think I had told you three and a half percent last time, so we're, we're gonna be somewhere in there, but that's kind of the one last thing. We've got to determine where we can put that, uh, with the exception of buyer, which I told you was six and a half percent. We just need to get them up to competitiveness with the other departments.
And then we'll still hold our truth in taxation in August.
Correct.
And there's not a projected tax increase at this time.
Correct. Yep.
Still have the judgment, uh, levy.
Levis, yeah. So I appreciate all the hard work and that was a big gap to fill. So thanks for, thanks everyone for the work.
Yep.
Any other questions on the budget?
Thanks to all the people who bought things in West Valley.
Keep doing your shopping here. And eating out and everything else. Okay. Seeing no other questions, we'll move to our council calendar. Did anybody have any questions or concerns on the calendar? Okay, and then to our potential future agenda items. Okay, our.
I know, didn't, uh, council in tomorrow ask something about banners and that, state and city?
Oh, that's correct, yeah. Just, um, that there would be a request for document or something, should residents ask us about those and we'll clarify the free speech and private property issues and that it's not a stance that the city itself is taking.
Yeah, we've, uh, we've got something ready for you, um, that just to explain the situation, what we can and can't do, and, uh, we can, we can get that to you pretty quickly.
Thank you.
And I will let you know that, um, I have a lot of family that lives everywhere and those that free speech issue is in a lot of communities where there are certain buildings and ownership of buildings. So it goes from Logan all the way to Utah County, so it's just not a West Valley issue, so. All right, council reports. Yes.
Last night I attended a meeting, it was the, uh, the University of Utah has a Center for Business Health and Prosperity. And in that organization, there's a West Valley Economic Development working with students and faculty that are, that are working together to help West Valley to have a strong business community, good jobs, education opportunities. It was a great meeting held in this room last night. Um, they, they brought up a lot of ideas and, and they're gonna start, uh, working on helping us and they'll come back at the end of next month with, uh, with some plans.
Hey, sounds great.
I attended the breakfast with the Easter Bunny with my grandson, which he didn't really know what's going on, but I really enjoyed it and. Well, my grandson. Got some good pictures. And then I wanted to mention, I can't remember if it was last week or the week prior, but the Facebook Live that the fire department did was really great. Um, highlighting the training that's going on and Chief Evans did a very good job.
Four of us, uh, last week attended the board meeting with Bingham Point Homeowners Association. And, uh, listened to their complaints, explained some of the reasons that they, their private streets aren't several public utilities. And, uh, told them we couldn't do anything about it at this point. That was a decision that was made then. And I were, we're still working on fence and the bollards for the the trail part that does go through their property. I've had a, one of the members that was there talk to me since then and say, you know, the fence isn't the most popular thing within the community. There may be two or three leaders in the community that would like the fence, but residents aren't aren't really enamored with it. And so I just thought I'd bring back that, uh, perspective too.
Thank you.
Just to comment on that, I had similar feedback and until I told this, it's the resident that lives right there, it'll be most impacted by it. And, and once I mentioned the type of fence that we're planning, she felt more ease with it and, um, I breathe, I guess, she was.
And I can see how that will. And I can see how that will help. Especially the problems that they're having with just people. I guess wandering would be a good word, wandering over from the park and treating their private property and like they treat the public property in the park. So it's an ongoing problem. They're working on it, we're working on it, so it should come to a conclusion at some point.
Hey. I got to participate at the egg hunt Saturday morning, which is one of my favorite things because I get to go up on the ladder truck 115 feet, which is my favorite kind of heights, so well-attended. Parks Department, congratulations, you did a really, really good job, very well organized. And there were a lot of little kids with as cold as it was out there just picking up eggs. And literally, it was over in four minutes. So.
Slow this year.
There was no snow.
I say slow.
Oh, slow, yeah. Haven't timed it in the past, but it was over quick, so very well done and thank you to the Parks Department. Okay, we do have a need for a closed session or disposition of real property and pending litigation. If someone would make that motion and then we'll go into closed session and not talk about anything else and just adjourn from that meeting.
Motion for closed session, disposition of property and pending legal, legal.
Let it get you.
Nothing else.
Anyway, motion is second, Ms. Campbell.
Councilman Petisamano? Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northville?
Yes.
And Mayor Link?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, you'll adjourn this meeting and go into our closed session, we'll give our.